Thank you. Are you in call to order? Roll call?
Mr. Albro. Ms. Calderon?
Here.
Mr. Batista. Ms. Kaufinger?
Here.
Mr. Lombardi?
Here.
Mr. Luna?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Vice President Dunn?
Here.
President Gomez?
Here. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance is signed by the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings law, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Borough Hall on New Milford Public Library. Notices have been sent to the record in the Twin Borough News. The Board announces that under its long-standing policy, we will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meeting of the Board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked to not speak negatively or in a derogatory manner about any employee of the Board or any student. Okay, we're going to start off with a presentation for our school ethics board governance. Enroll the Board member.
Welcome. I think, is it easy to name them like they're on there? You absolutely can. For those of you who have not met, Stacy Cherry, she is from Law Offices of Fogarty and Kara, Board Counsel, and she is helping the Board get to their next level, which will be the master board. We're almost there. So, the presentations and trainings in the public forum help us get there, and so we're grateful that you've come to me. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for having me. I will try to be as entertaining as Vic, not quite as razzle-dazzle maybe as he is, but I will do my best. So, we're going to talk about school ethics, board governance, the role of the Board member. I'm sure some of you, especially who've served for a while, have heard some of these things before, but it's always good to do a little bit of a review. If you have any questions, certainly feel free to let me know. I'd be happy to answer them, and we'll get right to it. So, we'll talk about the role of the Board and the Board members. So, the Board's real powers come from our state statutes in 18A. Their general powers and duties for the Board are enforcing the rules from the New Jersey State Board of Education to make, to amend, and to repeal rules for government and management of the school and for the employees, and to do things, all acts, that are consistent with the rules of the State Board, and for the lawful and necessary conduct of equipment maintenance, the really action of the district, you know, that you're going to be overseeing. You have to do things like approve the curriculum that meets the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, adopt the budget that provides for the thorough and efficient education of the students, hire the necessary certified personnel. We're going to talk a little bit about the Board's role in that hiring process, and develop the policies. That's something that's really important that the Board does in terms of the district is develop the policies that are going to be followed within the Board. It's important that none of these things are done just by Board action. You're acting upon the recommendation of the superintendent in terms of those pieces that the Board then proceeds with. You function only when you're in session, when you have a quorum of Board members in order to convene the meeting and take action, and you meet under the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act. So, making sure that you give the proper notice when you're going to have meetings. Typically, you notice all of your meetings at the beginning of the year so that you don't have to do notice before any particular meeting, but you can call a special meeting throughout the year by providing the appropriate notices. You can meet in committees as long as you don't have a quorum to discuss the business of the Board. The committees can't act on whatever is being discussed because there isn't a quorum present at the time. But that is the way many Boards meet to review, for example, the policies, things like that, and then bring recommendations to the full Board where action is then taken. We do always caution about emails and text messages because if Board members are emailing back and forth amongst themselves or texting back and forth amongst themselves, that can result in a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act because if you are having back and forth conversations between multiple Board members about what actions the district's going to take, that is seen as potentially a meeting that should have been noticed. I swear it's not me. Did I touch something? That should have been noticed so that the public can be present to hear those discussions if it's something that's appropriate for public discussion. It is okay to have like an email sent out by the Board President with, you know, information that's going to be coming up at the meeting or something like that. A single Board member could respond to the Board President about that, but you don't want to have a reply all where you're going then back and forth discussing the topic and considering what it would be. Was it me? Did I touch something I need to avoid? Okay. So, the Board and the administration and how you work together. So, really, the administration is running the day-to-day operations of the school. The Board is directing the administration through its policies on what your goals are for the administration to be doing. The phrase we always talk about is that the Board members are responsible not to administer the school, but to see that they are well-run. And that's kind of the framework we always think under in terms of how Board members should be conducting themselves. You're not administering the day-to-day activities in the school, but you're making sure those things are well-run by the people that have been put in place. Your particular Board member responsibility cannot be that you're stepping in to do administrative responsibilities. It's also set out in your policies that that is not the responsibility of the Board member. It's important, you know, as a Board member, while you may feel that you get some extra access to the school, you still have the same type of access that typical parents or community members have within the district. So, you can't go in and you observe classrooms or things like that. Unlike, just like any other parent, you would get the ability to do those things only to the same extent that a typical parent would be able to do that. And you have to follow the other district policies, like the Board Visitor Policy. So, you certainly could come for, you know, the Valentine's Day party for your child, things like that, but you couldn't just pop in to observe, you know, a third grade classroom to see how it's going. The superintendent typically has the responsibilities of administering the district, keeping the Board informed about what's happening, and making the operational recommendations for the district. The business administrator is charged with typically the budget, maintenance, facilities, the purchasing agent, those pieces. And so, those responsibilities are delegated to your administrators to make sure those are happening. What we really want and hope for with all our Boards is that there is a true cooperative relationship between the Board, the Board members, and those administrators. The members being able to share with the administration if they have concerns, hopefully in advance of meetings so that the administration can respond effectively to what those concerns may be, and then also keeping in mind what topics are appropriate for public discussions. So, certain things we would not discuss in public. We always advise Board members, you're probably going to receive complaints or concerns that come from community members. It could be about a particular staff member. It could be something to do with curriculum. It could be about a special ed service for a child. And those things, when they're brought to a Board member, should be directed back to the administration so that it can go through the chain of command. So, it would typically be sent back to the superintendent, who may deal with it depending on what the topic is, but who may also say, okay, this isn't really at the superintendent level yet. You need to go to the classroom teacher or to the director of special services, wherever the concern lies. If through following that proper chain of command, the issue is not properly addressed, then it could come back to the Board to address the failure of administrative action. But the Board member themselves would not be responding to the member of the public about what the concern is. They would be directing it to the administration to follow up. We'll talk about the code of ethics. For your code of ethics, we are talking about making sure that Board members are supporting the district, protecting the personnel and the performance of their duties. We want to make sure that you understand that your responsibility, you can of course have discourse and disagreement about opinions about topics that are coming up before the Board, but ultimately, the Board members are supporting the actions that are taken and that comments you're making or things you're doing are not undermining or opposing the school personnel or the district as a whole. It doesn't mean you can't disagree, but it does mean that ultimately you will provide support that doesn't undermine the actions that are being taken in the district or the particular staff members and what they're doing. The role of the Board member, individually, a little more specifically. As a Board, you function as a unit. So, the actions you take are done when you're functioning as a unit, not as an individual member. So, when Board members meet to discuss a topic or an action that's going to be taken, everybody can have differing opinions, the same opinions, share those opinions as part of the discussion before action is taken. But ultimately, the Board then takes action that becomes a single course of action by the majority vote of the Board. And that's what the Board will then implement or the administration will implement depending on what it is. In the public, we have an expectation of kind of decorum for everybody and that the Board will speak on the, the President will speak on the Board's behalf to the public. And certainly, the President could ask for another member's contribution on certain topics, but the Board will be the one who is kind of the mouthpiece for the Board when you're presenting to the public. The Board policy consistent with the code of ethics and what you can and can't do in terms of those pieces specifically lays out that no Board member as an individual by virtue of being on the Board can exercise administrative responsibility with regard to what the district is doing as that relates to the schools, as it relates to individual employees. So, you can't direct, for example, the superintendent or the business administrator or a principal to do something as an individual Board member. And the Board members don't have individual supervisory authority over any of the staff members. It's supervisory authority as a unit. There's a confidentiality expectation as a Board member. So, the things that you discuss, that you learn as a member of the Board are expected to remain confidential. This applies to things like a HIB hearing. So, you will discuss potentially in closed session if a parent appeals a determination of a HIB, the particulars of that matter. That would be expected to remain confidential, things related to students. But it also applies to preliminary discussions you're having about something that may be coming forward to the Board as an action item that was initially discussed in close. You wouldn't discuss it in public until later. If you're in negotiations, you know, the topics that you discuss would be kept confidential. So, limits on your role as a Board member? Oh, oh. Got a little ahead of myself. Okay, so, the role of the Board member is laid out in the code of ethics, but we also have the things that you cannot do essentially as a Board member. If there are violations of the code of ethics, you can have a complaint that is filed that addresses the violation of the code of ethics. And then you have the School Ethics Act. There also can be complaints that are filed with regard to that. There's a distinction in terms of what the complaint allegations entail and who prosecutes it. So, for the prohibited acts, you have a potential finding of probable cause that there's a violation, and then the prosecution of that complaint is done through the Deputy Attorney General. When you have a complaint that alleges violations only under the code of ethics, the complainant prosecutes that complaint as it moves forward. If they are things that are based on private action outside of the performance of your duties as a Board member, then you would not be entitled to indemnification for your defense of those claims. If it is based on your duties as a Board member, there could be indemnification for the cost of the defense of the claims. So, what types of administrative actions would be considered a violation of the code of ethics? So, these are probably the ones that are the most discussed. One is giving a direct order to school personnel or becoming directly involved in the activities or functions that should be the responsibility of your school administrators or school personnel. So, those things that would be kind of the day-to-day administration of the school. Taking deliberate actions that undermine or oppose or compromise what is for the school personnel or the performance of their duties. So, making those comments that would undermine what the superintendent is doing, something like that. Or acting or attempting to resolve a complaint or doing your own investigation on something that should have been directed to the superintendent or other personnel to follow the code of, response, nope, the chain of command. So that it's addressed through the chain of command, and you only act as a Board if there's a failure for a response within that chain of command. There have been some pretty clear violations that relate to Board members being involved in personnel decisions or being too involved, as I would say, in personnel decisions. So, your role, other than the hiring of the superintendent really, is one of voting to appoint the best qualified person that is brought forth to you at the recommendation of the superintendent. You cannot withhold the recommendation for hiring for an arbitrary and capricious reason, and you're limited in your involvement in that hiring process except for the hiring of the superintendent, which is actually one of the most pivotal roles of the Board where you're obviously intricately involved in the search process, selection, and ultimate hiring. There were some important advisory opinions about Board members and their involvement in those personnel-type issues. So, one was on exit interviews of staff members, and the advisory opinion was that having Board members conduct exit interviews for staff who are not returning would be outside of the Board members' responsibilities to determine, the Board members felt like we want to determine, you know, why are these people leaving? You know, is there something we can do to, you know, improve the district, retain staff, things like that? And they said, no, this is outside the policymaking, the planning, the role of the Board. If there's going to be exit interviews, something like that, it should be conducted by school personnel. It would be done by your superintendent, your principal, your human resources, something like that. The interviewing process is another one, I think, that comes up pretty often. The advisory opinions are pretty consistent that while you can, let's say can, be part of the process of hiring, it's certainly not a recommended course of action. It is to be limited to an advisory role if you're doing it. You're not going to be the interviewer of the potential applicants. They would say that it would be limited to maybe one or two Board members participating in the process in that kind of advisory role, listening in, things like that. And you have to make sure that at the end of it, the recommendation is really left to the superintendent in terms of who will be put forth for the position that is available. And the commission has noted that they really do not support Board members being involved in interviewing for positions that are below the superintendent of schools, although the advisory opinions have said it's not that it's completely prohibited. Some of the things they look for to see if it is permitted is, did the superintendent create an interview hiring process that included having Board members, and you were invited to participate versus the Board saying, we want to be in on the interview process? Volunteering is another one that comes up. There are actually quite a few advisory opinions about Board members and their role in volunteering. Some of the kind of themes of that have really been about what is the volunteer's role in the district? How involved are they in day-to-day activities that are happening? Are they volunteering in a way that will result in them having to give direction to staff or in a way that staff will have to give direction to them? And the more intricately involved the volunteer position is, the more likely it is to be a violation because you're getting involved in administering the schools. So, things like being a volunteer for the school theater production that involved casting, rehearsals, lighting, giving direct orders to the staff member who's the extracurricular theater club person would be something that exceeds their responsibilities. But it doesn't mean you can't come for Dr. Seuss Day and read a book to the class or be on the PTO or PTA, whatever it may be. It really is about how much interaction you're going to have. So, coming in and painting the sets for the school play, that's okay. But coming in and being the stage manager for the school play, that's probably going to get you in some trouble. You're there much more often. You're directing students, you're directing staff, and those pieces are going to be an issue. These are some things, I would say, kind of Boards, you know, Board members behaving badly in terms of what they're doing. The first one is a Board member violating the School Ethics Act. When they go into the Board office, they didn't give any notice that they were coming in. They talked to the secretarial staff, I believe, about wanting to review the resumes for candidates for a position. They tried to direct, I believe it was a custodian, to access the locked cabinet of potential resumes so that they could then go in and review all of them. And they found that this went beyond policymaking, planning, and appraisal. They were directing staff members and attempting to administer the school. Another was a Board member violating the code by issuing a RICE notice to the business administrator without the superintendent. That's a violation of subsection E. The Board member implied that he was acting on behalf of the Board when he was acting individually, and that RICE notice would not be issued in that way. The last one was a Board member doing their own investigation essentially. They were concerned that the They were concerned that the director of special services was double-dipping, that they were not only working for the district as the director of special services, but while they were doing their work within the district, they were like consulting somewhere else and spending their time doing other work. And so they conducted their own investigation about what they thought the director was doing, tried to, you know, interview people, look at records, and see what the potential violation was for the director. Something like that should be referred to the superintendent, who would determine what kind of investigation is appropriate for the personnel issue. We'll talk a little bit about the board meeting. So closed session is obviously a topic that comes up often under the Open Public Meetings Act. What can you discuss in closed session? And what things have to be discussed in public so that the public can see and hear them? Things that you talk about in closed session are things that are protected by law. Things that have to do with receiving federal funds that would diminish your chance of receiving those if it was released to the public. Something that would be an invasion of pupil privacy. So when we're talking about special education, when we're talking about HIB hearings, discipline, would all be things that are discussed in closed. Collective negotiation discussions, so negotiations. Typical updates to the board about how the negotiations are going or done in close. Certain real estate transactions. Anything that is a potential legal issue that you're discussing, your legal strategy, attorney-client privilege things would be something you can discuss in closed. Pending or anticipated litigation. Personnel matters, so things that might involve discipline of an employee, reviews that are resulting in retaining an employee or dismissing them, non-renewing them for the next year would be enclosed unless the employee waives their right to have it discussed in close and then it's done in public. And then things related to fines, suspension, or loss of license. Between the public comment period, there's always a portion of the meeting that's set aside for public comment. You adopt a policy that discusses how your public comment portion will go. You can have a time limit for how long the public can speak. Your policy limits speakers to three minutes. No participant of the public can speak again on the same topic until everybody else on that topic has been heard. Once everyone's been heard, then they could potentially speak again on the topic. There's no requirement that board members respond to any questions or that the administration responds to any questions. It really is a time for the board to hear from the public on topics that are relevant to the board's action. There certainly can be a response. It would come from the board president or typically the superintendent, depending on what the topic is, if that's appropriate. We generally recommend that you listen to all the public comments, closed public comment, and then the items that are going to be responded to be responded to at that time. Sometimes additional information is needed or a response is inappropriate. So the administration may not respond to those particular pieces. And we don't always have a public that's happy about that, but it's not really a time for a discourse with the public. It's not like a Q and A period. It's to hear the comments from the public. You can't prohibit comments from the public based on disagreement with what they're going to say. You can, if there are, you know, obscene things, you know, we can put a stop to those pieces. But just because there's disagreement or differing opinions about a comment, we still listen to what the public has to say about them as long as they're within, you know, kind of respectful provisions of the policies. Another area I see sometimes boards getting a little bit of difficulty with is old business, which really is unfinished business. So it's things that were either on for discussion that were not gotten to on the agenda. Doesn't typically happen with school boards. It happens with other types of boards. Things that were scheduled for a prior meeting and the meeting concluded before you got to all the items. Again, not something that typically happens with school boards. Or the one that is most common when it does happen is something that was postponed to the present meeting. So if something was laid on the table at a prior meeting, you can pull it up at a future meeting by action of a board member to discuss at the present meeting. But it really is about finishing business that was before the board previously at the current meeting. Then new business is typically something that a board member wants to bring before the board for potential actions. So a member making a motion to consider something that has come up for the district and getting a second vote on that and then discussing it. You can also move to take from the table something that is on the table that wouldn't have come up otherwise. Some free speech issues with the School Ethics Act. So as a board member, you don't lose your right to free speech just because you're serving on a board. You still have the ability to make comments about things in public. But you have to consider your role as a board member and the Code of Ethics in terms of what you're saying as well as ensuring that you're indicating that you're not speaking on behalf of the board when you're making statements. So we're often looking at two subsections that come into play. Making sure that you're clear that authority rests with the board, not with individuals, as well as maintaining confidentiality. So you're not going to speak on something in public on a matter that wouldn't be known to the general public, that you just know about because you're a board member. So you can have accurate information, but if it's confidential, it should not be spoken about. Or if it's not something that is known to the public yet, it should not be spoken about. You also wouldn't want to speak or post about something that would compromise the board. So an example of something that created the appearance of a board member endorsing a candidate. So there was a board member who wrote an op-ed endorsing four candidates for the Board of Education. The person who made the post did provide a disclaimer saying, the author is writing the endorsement on his own personal behalf, his opinions are his own. The board member did admit that he did not seek approval from the board before submitting the op-ed piece. This went forward, an administrative law judge said, look, this disclaimer is not sufficient. You know, it is not clear that you are not speaking on behalf of the board. It went beyond your duties as a board member. It had the potential to compromise the board in terms of its action and give unfair advantage to those people that you endorsed because it implied that the board as a whole was endorsing them. And that was forwarded and accepted as the findings and conclusions that went forward. They recommended the penalty of censure due to the deliberate the purposeful nature of the conduct that could lead the public to think that this was an op-ed that was on behalf of the board. So when you're talking in particular about social media, we advise you don't post anything, obviously, that would violate the district's policies for board members, that you uphold the district's value for respecting individuals, not make defamatory statements about the district, employees, students, or their families, not disclose anything that's confidential or that would not be available to the public, and not use or refer to the Board of Education, your title, your position, or something that would give you an unfair, unwarranted advantage for you or a family member when making those types of statements. We also recommend being careful about communicating through social network platforms with other board members because of that potential violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. That you could have a quorum even through social media or social networking type posts. Making sure that you refer any questions or concerns that are posted. You know, sometimes somebody will write on your Facebook account or Instagram, whatever the newest and greatest is, questions that you potentially can answer, but really should be referred back to the superintendent. And then obviously not posting anything that would be a violation of the School Ethics Act or the Code of Ethics. There is an appropriate disclaimer that you put when you are making statements. Says the following statements are made in my capacity as a private citizen, not in my capacity as a board member. They're not representative of the board or its individual members and solely represent my own personal opinion. So that would be the disclaimer you would typically put. That, if you notice, that is different than the disclaimer that was put on the op-ed piece. It did not explicitly say that it was not the opinion of the board. I will note that including a disclaimer does not necessarily mean you are free and clear. And not including a disclaimer does not necessarily mean that you will be in violation. They're really going to look at what are the total circumstances and what is the impression that's given from whatever you said, posted, put out there in terms of whether you're purported to be speaking on behalf of the board or speaking as an individual member. So you have to kind of consider how is it going to be viewed by people who are reading it or hearing it? And if it could be viewed as being something that you're potentially speaking on behalf of the board versus in your own individual opinion, that's what could get you in trouble. So while having the disclaimer is certainly beneficial in terms of showing that you are not doing that, you still need to be cautious that that's not the only factor that's considered. What about using your candidate webpage once you become a new board member? We would suggest that once you do that, it's no longer prudent to continue to have kind of that candidate webpage, candidate Facebook account, whatever it may be, that's, that was, you know, putting out there that you were running and what your platform was and all of that. You want to make sure that you're transparent and that it's not going to lead to a filing of complaints because you still have your personal candidate page, which could be viewed as representative of the board's opinion once you become a member of the board. Conflicts of interest and recusal. So this comes up on some of your voting as well as participation in negotiations. It's always beneficial for school board members to think about first conflicts they have, but then you also have to think about the conflicts that may be imputed to you by your immediate family members and your relatives. So your immediate family members are your spouse and your dependent children who reside in your household, relatives, parent, parent-in-law, step-parent, children, children-in-law, step-parent, siblings, step-siblings, half-siblings, aunts, uncles, nieces, nephews, grandparents and grandchild, whether by blood, marriage, or adoption. So the definition of relative is quite large and includes your people and your spouses. People are all relatives. So even if there's not an automatic recusal because of a per se conflict, you have to consider case-by-case conflicts based on your involvement in or your relatives' involvement in a union in another district. So there are quite a few advisory opinions that deal with this and discuss specific scenarios with particular relatives in particular circumstances in districts. But we've tried to kind of summarize the overall guidance from that. Things that are considered, most importantly, if you have someone in another district who's a relative, if they're an officer in the NJEA or the local education association in that district, that's going to make it more likely that there's a conflict. If they're on the negotiating team, even if they're not an officer, that's more likely too. Or if they have some other role in the negotiations as a member of that unit that could influence the outcome of the negotiation. So I have some districts where it really is like the president, vice president who participate in the negotiations. I have other districts where you might have a teacher who's on the negotiating committee, a custodian, a nurse, a teacher's assistant, and they have a couple of people from each group who kind of sit on the committee and have a voice in it. So any of those people could potentially create a conflict if they're your relative and they're in another district. And then, of course, if you're a board member who's employed in another district who has any of those positions, you would have to consider that also. We do sometimes have, you know, a teacher who's on a board in another district and they would be conflicted in some ways. It's a handy chart for you to consider what the relationship is to the board member and then what the board member can do in terms of participating in negotiations, voting to ratify the contract, and participating in issues with the superintendent. So like the superintendent's annual evaluation. So depending on the relationship to the board member. So for example, if it's your spouse who's a current member of the local union in the district, you can't participate in negotiations, you can't vote to ratify the contract, and you can't participate in issues related to the superintendent. If they're a member of a similar union in another district, you wouldn't be able to participate in negotiations. You would be able to vote to ratify the contract unless there's another reason that there's a conflict, and you would be able to participate in the issue with the superintendent. So you can reference that to look at what you may or may not have a conflict that impacts one of those types of issues for the district. And then we got some updates over spring/summer 2023 about what are the familial relationships and what's really a relative under the Act. And it is helpful, there are so many. But they specifically set out what counts as a relative for considerations related to the employment of the superintendent. There's two whole pages of it. I won't go through every single one for you, but you can always look at the chart to see what would be considered a relative and then you'll be able to look at, are you conflicted in terms of participation in negotiations, voting on the contract, or things, issues related to the superintendent? And you'll see a lot of the ones that are, it's not a relative are because it's like a second attenuation. Like my sister's husband's spouse is not a relative. So they tried to draw some lines to make it a little clearer because they were getting a lot of requests, I think, for advisory opinions on that. And if you have any questions? Yeah?
I just have one clarification. Sure. It was kind of early on. And it said, while you are able to disagree with the superintendent, and I think it was word, the word was support.
Yeah.
So could you just kind of expand on that, clarify? And I'll give you like what went through my head because I'm looking at the flag. So if the superintendent came before us and said, hey, I don't think there should be flags in schools anymore, I don't want there to be flags. Or I don't think that there should be clocks in schools anymore, I don't want there to be clocks.
Yeah.
So if I were to disagree and I were to think that there should be a flag or a clock in a school, but for whatever reason the board voted, what does me supporting that decision mean if I disagree and think there should still be a flag in a school?
So I think ultimately, I mean, you could say I don't agree with it, but you would have to support that they're going to either remove the clocks or keep the clocks and not be out challenging the ultimate determination, I would think.
Okay, but there's a big difference between supporting something and not outwardly challenging it.
Yes, so once the board takes the action, that that's the directive of the majority as a member of the board, you're supposed to support what that determination was. If what you're doing is going to undermine the action that's being taken by the superintendent or the board, that's where you would get into difficulty with the School Ethics Act.
But that didn't word it like that, it said support the superintendent's decision, not the board's.
Well, because ultimately, in that instance, you're talking, I think, about the board. But if the superintendent has made a recommendation for something and that's what you're doing, then we're supporting the superintendent to do that. So here it sounded like the board, to me, that the board had agreed, we're going to keep the clocks or not keep the clocks.
Or let's say it wasn't in front of the board. Let's say the superintendent universally, or unilaterally, I should say, made that decision. I would assume that that would be within the purview of the superintendent's
It would be.
decision to not come to the board for it. I can disagree with that. I am not supposed to outwardly state that I disagree with that, which is fine, but support it.
I don't think you're not supposed to. I don't think it says you're not supposed to outwardly state that you don't support it.
I remember you can go back to the actual file.
I don't think that, I think that was the slide I just liked it.
That's what it said. And it's the wording of it bothered me. Like does support mean you're supposed to vote? Like does support mean you're supposed to vote for that?
Well, it doesn't mean you're supposed to vote for it.
Right, right, I get it. Doesn't mean you're supposed to endorse it. Do you mean when somebody stops you in the supermarket and says, why are there no flags in school? How do you, how do you agree with that? Am I allowed to say I don't? Like, I'm just looking for clarification, that's all. And I'm giving, obviously, a proper
Was that it? I want to make sure about all of it.
That's the third one.
Yeah.
It does not mean that you cannot disagree.
Yeah.
Yeah, it generally requires that the board member support the superintendent.
Requires that the board members
Yeah, the concern is that if you're not supporting it, you're undermining it. And so that's something that you can't do is undermine the superintendent because the district is going forward with implementation of that. Um, and so I would say, you know, certainly you could say I may not agree with it, but we're going to support going forward with it. That's the action the district's going to take.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You indicated before, just so that I understand. You indicated before that if the board had chosen to support this type of action, that, you know, obviously we would go along with it, which that I'm clear on. But you're saying that if it's a unilateral decision that's made by the district through the superintendent without any coming to the board, we are supposed to also then support that decision?
Yeah, the, the superintendent is charged with administering the school district. And so the superintendent is tasked with lots, really, of kind of day-to-day decisions um, to move forward with, um, ensuring that the district is, um, well-run and able to meet all of its requirements. Uh, and so generally, yes, it would be, you know, we would support what the superintendent ultimately has taken as the action.
To the extent that that language says that it is to support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties, to the extent that, that we disagree that it's a proper, uh, action, eh, eh, you know, within their actual duties, then what does that mean for how we're supposed to, um, address it?
Well, so as members of the board, you evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis. So they would go into their evaluation. If you think the superintendent is not properly performing their duties, that would go towards their evaluation.
So that type of action, then you're saying that we cannot comment or do anything about it until the superintendent evaluation period?
Uh, I think you certainly could potentially have a discussion as a board. If the board has a concern that would then go to the superintendent. But it would have to be the board as a whole. Um, an individual board member cannot evaluate the superintendent or take action. Um, really, any staff member, um, as an individual. But if the board as a whole determined there was a concern that had to be addressed, then I think we potentially could.
The discussion that then happens with the board, is there quorum or is there not?
Is there what?
A quorum or not?
There would have to be if you were to take action.
Then it would be a meeting.
Oh, no, you're, you'd be discussing a personnel issue, so it would have to be barbed up and closed.
Not if it's, not necessarily a personnel issue, but I'm saying like in that, in that example of getting rid of, you know,
Clocks, yeah.
Right? That's not a personnel, I mean, so what are you saying?
Well, but you're evaluating the superintendent.
If we're not evaluating the superintendent, we're evaluating that action.
I would say that it's still evaluative of the superintendent.
Because she's doing the action.
Right.
So that is what defines the personnel thing. So it's a decision made by the superintendent, it is automatically a personnel issue?
I would not say every decision made by the superintendent is necessarily a personnel issue. But if you're talking about critiquing the superintendent for action that's taken, then that's evaluative. Has to be done by the whole board.
And I, and I apologize, I'm just going back and forth. Isn't every decision then that the superintendent makes, whether something as benign as whether or not you want to have a clock, would that then qualify as a personal, a personnel issue under your definition?
I think of probably a very significant portion of them would, yes.
A significant portion?
I can't think of like an exception off the top of my head. Lawyers are loathe to say it's a hundred percent at, at any given time.
Lawyers are annoying. Okay, I'm just trying to understand the distinction. Because essentially, and I'm not saying this is a superintendent, but essentially every decision then that the superintendent makes under that definition is a personnel issue.
Well, I think the key is though going back to what's the role of the board and what's the role of the administration. So the administration's job is you're ta- tasking them to conduct the day-to-day operations of the school. And so you've given that role to the superintendent to make those day-to-day decisions. Your role is the policy, the hiring of the superintendent, the evaluation of the superintendent. So that's where it comes back to you to say, wait a minute, I don't think the superintendent is doing the job correctly in the evaluation. You've charged the superintendent with the responsibility for making those day-to-day decisions. And so it's not the board's job to question those, except in the evaluation process.
Right, so that, I guess that's where
Yeah.
We're going back and starting back to my question then. So that anything that we disagree with, that we're not going to talk about in a public meeting, we would have to then talk about in the evaluation process.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was the show.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions?
No, I totally thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we, well, not that I have not heard this a bazillion times before, but will we get a copy of this? Because I like how that would be known.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent of Schools Report, Daniel Shanley.
Hi, everybody. Um, I have a few things that I must report first and just a few comments, then I'll be saving my full report for tomorrow. Um, first, I need to share with you the suspension report for September. I'll begin with the high school. We had, um, four students each receiving one day of out-of-school suspension. One for fighting, actually, one student, one day for fighting, another student, one day for fighting. One student for defiance towards staff. And one student for a social media threat towards another student. At the middle school, we had an incident of fighting where each student involved received one day of in-school suspension. And no suspensions for the two elementary schools for September. HIV report for the month of September, New Milford High School. One claim brought to the building principal for review. It was forwarded for, for a full investigation and it was confirmed as meeting, um, the definition of bullying. At the middle school, two claims brought to the principal for review. Both forwarded to the HIV specialist for a full investigation. One was confirmed as bullied.
Is the other unfounded or determined?
Uh, not determined yet. Gibbs Elementary, one brought to the building principal. It was forwarded for a full investigation and it was determined as unfounded. I'm sorry, that was Gibbs. And at Berkeley, none. Okay, first I'd like to thank Stacy very much for your presentation and for coming this evening, I appreciate it. I'd also like to thank, um, Councilman Matt Seymour, Doreen Zachar, Kelly Peter-Fran, Mr. Manny Pelly, the Bergen County, um, professionals, mental health and domestic violence professionals, and the New Milford Police Department, who all helped us, um, to, um, host uh, what I found to be a very, uh, moving and critically important, uh, symposium that addressed, um, teen and youth relationship, uh, violence last week. I'm just very grateful for the opportunity to work with them. And I look forward to the continued work that we'll be doing with our high school students on this topic. I'd also like to thank everybody who helped us prepare for and showed up for our open house last night. So all the high school staff, all of our students, um, club members, athletes, uh, bands, orchestra, students who came out to, uh, help promote all the wonderful things that go on in high school. We had a great turnout of seventh and eighth grade students and their parents. And overall, I would say that the night was a success. Like I said, I have a full report for tomorrow, but, um, I just would like to make, um, one other statement in light of the world events that we are, um, seeing unfold, uh, before our eyes in the news. Um, and, and remind everyone that New Milford is a small community of many smaller communities. And we have students, faculty, staff, borough families who represent a rich variety of ethnicities, national origins, religious identities, and political viewpoints. And I would just like to reaffirm that together, we are one New Milford family. And we are here to comfort, uh, and care for each other during times of crisis. And, and we recognize that world events like these affect us all individually and in very different ways. Most importantly, we remind our students that we need to be respectful of each other and that we will tolerate nothing short of that. Um, I first became a mother in 2001, just a few short weeks before nine eleven. And I remember very clearly, um, my prayers at that time, which have not changed 22 years later. And that as I continue to pray for peace for us all and for those around the world who are suffering. And I ask, um, just to remind everyone that the New Milford Public School District is here to provide resources and support to those of us in the community, um, who need them. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Report, Lauren Odaksta.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to thank all of our, uh, faculty members who helped make last week's first elementary parent academy. It was a focus on literacy, a great success. Um, we had a nice turnout. We are hoping that more, the, the good word spreads and more parents and families come join us at our next event. I believe it will be in the winter and a focus will be on math. Um, but thank you to all of those faculty members who participated. Um, their presentations were very thoughtful and meaningful and parents walked away with, um, takeaways that they could use to support student learning at home. And they all are on approval, um, on the agenda for approval tomorrow evening. So, um, thank you. And I do not have a report this evening, but I do have a, um, pretty hefty performance report that I will share out tomorrow on, um, last spring's NJSLA performance.
Thank you. Business Administration Report, Stephanie Kuchar.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so we had our October fifteenth snapshot last Friday, October thirteenth. Um, this is really sort of the beginning of the funding cycle. This snapshot is the start, which then funds the ASSA, which is the application for state aid, which is completed in early December. I just want to thank Stacy Nowoschowski, and this was the first snapshot after the conversion from Power School to Genesis. And I'm not really quite sure that I can articulate the level of data that's included in this report and that needs to be done correctly, um, because that's what our funding is based off of. So that was a really large undertaking every year, but especially this year with the conversion, um, to Genesis. We've had a lot of people working behind the scenes with Stacy. And so just a really big thank you to everyone for all the work that was put into that. Um, we also had to, um, we were doing non-public evaluations in prior years. Um, because of the difficulties with the budget, we outsourced that to Bergen County Special Services. So there was an additional sort of check with, to make sure that all of that data was correct because it's no longer our data. So it was just a huge undertaking and thankfully that's done. But I'm confident in the data that was submitted and we should be in a really great position for the ASSA. Um, we also have the DRTRS, which is the District Report of Transported Resident Students, um, which has fortunately grown quite a bit this year, but nonetheless, that's due on November fifteenth. Um, an agenda item for tonight, uh, actually for tomorrow, is the CMP in M1. The M1 is a worksheet that, uh, estimates the annual required maintenance of the budget amount. And that's submitted with the district's comprehensive maintenance plan. Um, this report really just takes numbers from the ACFR and the budget and puts it into one place with a narrative that details the required maintenance every year. Um, food services, um, we've been experiencing higher balances than normal. We've been sending out, um, semi-monthly notifications to families from my office um, to remind families to be mindful of these balances. Um, but this is really important as this affects our operating budget for food services. Um, because we, we do have high balances and it has historically been an issue with the high school and middle school. And now it's trickling down to both elementary schools as well. So now it's a bigger thing to tackle, but just to be mindful of the food that your children are eating and, and the balances that you have. In the transportation world, we're excited to welcome some new faces to the Berkeley Street Elementary School preschool class. It's going to open later this month. Um, I know that Dr. Chris Miles is really excited for these students to arrive. This is going to be the first preschool program in that elementary school. Um, but this just means that we need to add another transportation route to our already pretty large list. Um, so I know that we will be having some transportation changes in times as we welcome this new classroom. So we just ask for patience and mindfulness in some routes. And times will be changing for families as we add students and this route to, um, the existing routes that are already being run. And then the last one that I have is F twenty-two, twenty-three point two-two-two. Um, that's on tomorrow's night's agenda. And this is a revision to a student meeting and one-to-one aid. And the original resolution did not include the cost of that aid. And the student did attend ESY and is currently enrolled for the school year. And that concludes my report.
I just have a question about the balances. Do at a certain point, do you just cut it off and they can't use the account?
No, so we can't deny students food. And so they just sort of keep rising and rising. And I just have to make one more mention. Do you think we could get a bigger crest or a crest?
We had a nice crest.
I think John got us tonight.
I think we, I think we were, I think we got pumped. We had a nice crest and it's not there.
He did, he did, but I
He did.
I just
We noticed that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just had to share because custodians got them today.
They got you today.
They did.
Does anyone have any other questions for Stephanie?
I, I do. Do you, do you think, I would love it if we could, um, bring some photos of the new preschool classroom and share with the board and the public because the room's, the room looks great and you got it, I can share it tomorrow night. Oh, you have them already? Okay.
I have a little bit more.
Okay, great.
I love nothing more.
Um, I have a question, but it's not for Stephanie, it's for Lauren. For tomorrow's presentation, can we get an advanced copy of the document?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Because you, you'd say a lot of things and I have a personal policy.
Yeah, yeah, you, I, I am going to have copies. I can send an email, send it earlier in the day tomorrow, tomorrow morning. And it will be posted.
Yeah. I promise I'll only ask thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. I'm going to call you down. Thirty-five.
That'll be usual.
Thirty-five.
Anyone else?
It's a good report.
Good report.
Okay, um, any liaison board committee reports? Stephanie?
Actually, I have two.
Ooh.
Um, so we did have our, um, a curriculum meeting earlier at six o'clock today. And, uh, basically what Lauren went over was, um, the different professional development that is being offered this year. All of that is being grant-funded, there's a lot of it. So for any of you who would, um, like that information, you can reach out to me or to Lauren and we can forward the list of that to you. Um, I have a hard copy now, if anybody wants to see it, I can pass that around as well. Um, and then there was a county meeting. This is my, my, my county report. Um, I'm done with the curriculum report. I'm just going to, just going to go on and then you guys just tell me to shut up when it's appropriate. Um, county meeting was on October third. Um, deeds to consider for our board members for meetings will be December fifth for a branding and communication meeting. February sixth, the topic is, um, an evening with the commissioner. March fifth is, um, at Hackensack. March fifth is at Hackensack for Unsung Heroes. And May seventh is the celebratory meeting, which will be held at Biagio's. The meeting opened with another plea for sustainable funding from the state so that school districts can afford to continue the programs that the state mandates. They also discussed the ongoing challenges that all schools in New Jersey are currently facing, which include the cost of benefits, staffing, and transportation, and the difficulties that New Jersey schools are facing in regards to staffing, faculty members, and bus drivers. And I was very gratified that, as I was listening to all of that, that thanks to Danielle, Aunt Lauren, Stephanie, this board, and our administrators, that we're actually in pretty good shape. So thank you to all of you for that. The keynote presentation was given by Attorney Lester Taylor. He made it very clear that this presentation was based on everything that was basically legal and not personal opinion. And he spoke to parental rights in public education. He did begin with a description of what school board members must do ethically, which we kind of heard tonight, which includes us enforcing all of the laws, the rules, and the regulations of the state board education. He discussed parental rights in the following areas, which included curriculum instruction, special education, HIB, student health and attendance, with discussion about managing equity in education and LGBTQ plus guidance. And there was a robust Q and A following this presentation. I thought it was very informative, very interesting. And for those of you who were not able to attend, if you have the opportunity, I would just suggest in this particular meeting, just going back and at least viewing that portion of the meeting. And now it's time for me to brag on our board a little bit. Because at that meeting, and I wasn't able to attend in person, but I did virtually. But Anthony was there and Paige and Cole and Heather and also Danielle and Stephanie. We did receive our award for board certification. We were the only school board that received that award at that particular meeting. I do think it's an honor and an accomplishment. So I just wanted to thank all of you for getting that to, getting us to that level, having that recognition and for your commitment and dedication to moving on to receiving our master board certification, which that is here tonight by your presence. So thank you all. And that concludes my reports for this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else have any committee reports?
I have a request.
Is anyone?
Well, Tony's our chief. You can do it tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't know if it's at the end. So finance facilities, just to see if we can get a meeting on the calendar. I know that there was a lot to get school up and running, but no time like the present to get right back into that. So I know you can hear me while you're typing away the minutes. Got it.
Any correspondence?
None this evening.
Okay. Agenda items for discussions. Review of the tentative agenda for the regular meeting to be held on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions regarding review of board action?
I mean, as I had sent, as it was here on our presentation about sending questions ahead to try to be prepared. So I did send some questions ahead. And I figured some of these I wanted to bring up because those in the public maybe don't really understand some of the things, so I thought it would be a good time to bring some of these up. So for the board action, the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, Dr. Kuchar brought up what that is and we'll have an attachment to that for tomorrow. The New Milford Public School Nursing Services Plan, so that comes up every year. And I just wanted to know, on that one, there was a question of whether or not we're supporting non-public schools because that section was highlighted. And I, I just, all I didn't understand was, yes, we do, which you have the answer here if you want to share that, or I can share. But that was highlighted, so I'm just really sure when it was highlighted as opposed to written in. Like, was it kind of like, hey, make sure we update this section? Okay, that was it. So, and my understanding is, yes, we do, as you said, support that as part of our required non-public services, includes textbooks, technology, safety. And this is for all of the non-public schools in the New Milford School District, that we are also responsible for supporting that. So that's it. That's it. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions regarding review of educational programs and curriculum? Hey, Brian?
And I can read what you had emailed me, or you can, or if you want to speak to it either. But there, we have a lot of free programs that we're doing for professional development and it's listed. But it didn't have like what it is. And I think it's really important that people hear and understand, not just the name of the program, but what we're doing too.
Sure.
So.
You're right ahead.
Okay, great. So my questions were beforehand, just a summary of the program and the impact or the benefits of the district. So very interesting. So Conquer Math, the audience is from kindergarten all through high school. And its workshops focus on the mathematical content, New Jersey Student Learning Standards, and pedagogy, pedagogy, so that teachers have a thorough understanding of what students need to master as well as understand the best practices and methods for teaching them. Teachers travel to the Conquer Mathematics facility. So math is a focus, so that's great. The Advancing Literacy Teachers College, Columbia University. The response was that, this is the audience is grades three to five, six to eight in high school. This is professional development led by a staff developer. So it's immersed in responsive coaching practices, experience gained from working in classrooms, help teachers learn to lead effective writing workshops that help writers develop essential skills in the four main kinds of writing, narrative, informational, literary analysis, and argument. High school professional development also includes elements of National Writing Project, designed to enhance the teacher's teaching of writing and literacy, providing teachers with opportunities to collaborate, share best practices, gain expertise in effective writing instruction, ultimately improving their students' writing skills. Then there's another in math, which is the Allison Mellow Math Consulting. That's grade five, Berkeley Street School. This is professional development, consists of workshops, demonstration lessons, and lab site classrooms, ongoing coaching for teachers using data to inform instruction. Allison Mellow supports the teacher's focus on integrating routines to increase reasoning and engagement, taking a strategic approach to fluency with basic facts, supporting conceptual understanding through the use of tools. Then there's Elevate Educators, which is grade six through high school math, high school social studies, and special education. This is content area professional development with staff developers from Elevate Educators. And they come into district to support that ongoing teacher growth. Experts in specific subjects, educational methods, work closely with the departments to enhance their subject knowledge and pedag, I can never say this right, pedagog.
Pedagog.
Pedagogical. No, no, you gave me a bad.
Pedagogical.
Skills. They facilitate workshops, collaborative planning sessions, classroom coaching, foster a deep understanding of curriculum and innovative teaching strategies. Science Explorers, K to five, Berkeley. This is Science Explorers program. It's designed for elementary students to foster their curiosity and interest in science through hands-on, interactive activities and experiments. What I want to bring up, I think this was what was brought up in the summer during our, right, during our retreats. Yeah, I listened. So, and really in this, introducing young learners to various scientific concepts, encouraging them to ask questions, nurturing their critical thinking, problem-solving skills in a fun and educational environment. It complements the FOS Next Generation Science Program that we have in the district, so that's great. And then, and then I believe, we have a few more here because there was a good list. So thank you for answering all of these. Robin, that audience is grade six to eight. Robin's approach to social, emotional learning. So this focuses on that part of what the district is focusing on, relying on the human connection through their coach practice model. Professional development starts by sparking a conversation through coach interactions with students, educator staff, and our families, creating a safe, supportive space for participants to think and talk about their mental well-being. Robin coaches who are accomplished leaders in their fields. They build trust and connect with participants to lead important discussions on self-awareness, resilience, connection, purpose, choices. Robin's curriculum core competencies align with KASEL, K-A-S-E-L. The Elevate Social, Emotional Learning to Teach and Practice Skills to Address Real World Challenges. It also complements our currently existing, I think it's been around now three or four years, the Advisory Program at DEO. There's also Bergen County Special Services. This is really just approving that as a professional development provider. So nothing specific in there. Oh, you're really going to get me there, I couldn't say it. Lo, Logramos Consulting. So one of the things here was in looking at support for our world language teachers in the middle and high schools through workshops, collaboration with their peers, coaching, and access to teaching resources. So the resources, methodologies, additional topics based on departmental feedback. So this is a lot, what I liked about seeing this was that we have a lot of professional development for our teachers in the, in the subjects that are most familiar, right? But this is good because our children are learning all these languages and I think it's important that they have that as well. So that's good. The DBQ Project, and this is for social studies, grade six to eight. Consult, but consultant from the DBQ Project. Data, discovery, what is it?
Document-based questions.
Document-based questions. Sorry, I just knew it was DBQ and they brought it home and said they had to do it. So document-based questions. The project is working with middle school teachers, providing resources for teaching document-based questioning, critical thinking skills. Teacher will review this structured approach to help students analyze historical documents, develop arguments, and write well-organized essays. The materials include document sets, guided questions, and support for educators to effectively teach students how to engage with primary sources and construct persuasive historical arguments. So one of the things that I wanted to, to say, thank you first for the response to that, was because, you know, we see these things and we approve them and we have our district goals. And then we talk about what we're going to do in action to support those goals. And so as a board, we're approving a lot of these plans that are either in place or going to be in place that we'll approve later. But it's all within the budgeting that was already decided, that we had already approved. So for those in the public that listen and look at this, to just understand a lot that goes into trying to provide the resources for our staff. And then with the staff hopefully getting continued feedback from that. So I just, I wanted to thank you for that and giving all of that information. And then this is from, yeah.
Kim Lauren adds something.
So I had put that together in response to the questions and also discussed this in detail with the committee this evening. I also want to, because I think this is really important to share. I have shared with the committee the funding streams that supports all of these. And all but two are funded through grant funds. Two are supported locally, so I think that's really important to know, being that what we dealt with last year, that we were able to sustain and even grow our professional development in core content areas as well as other areas is, you know, kudos to us for doing that. I think that's really great. And in addition to the Science Explorers and Allison Mellow Math Consulting is another one that are specific to Berkeley Street Elementary School. But we do have plans in place to turnkey this, the math professional development for our elementary teachers in Gibbs School, as well as additional supplemental science opportunities for Gibbs students that might look a little bit different, but so they're, they're not left out.
Let me just remind everybody, maybe who did not see the, the summer retreat. Why Berkeley gets something.
Sure. So each year we apply, we submit an ESEA application. And with all of the information that is collected from the district, they, schools are found eligible to receive funding. And three schools in the district have been found eligible to receive Title I funding for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Berkeley Street Elementary School, David Owens Middle School, New Milford High School. Historically, Gibbs has never received Title I funding. There is a lot of information that is collected as part of this evaluation, including free reduced numbers, other demographic information. The exact formula is not shared with us, which is not surprising. We never really know the formula. But we know, we do know obviously who is deemed eligible.
Generally, it's based on free reduced lunch numbers, percentages. And then you, it calculates a district average. And if the individual school falls above, falls, rises above the district average, then that school becomes eligible. So you are then required to use the funding only for those places. As a matter of fact, you are prohibited from using the funding for a school or students who are ineligible. So we have to provide additional supports for those schools because they're eligible. Just so that people understand the why.
And I think we also talked about historically, we were Target Assist, where we were only able to use that funding to support an identified population of students based on identified measures. And last winter, we submitted an application to operate a school-wide program, which was approved in all three of the schools. So this year, we are for the first time operating a Title I school-wide program, which in turn allows us to use that funding to support whole school, whole program, all of our students. Thank you, that's actually really important too. And, and I know there was another one too, which is the Bounce Out the Stigma Project, which was on here, which again, reading through this, again, asking for a description and an impact. And that this was a program that was founded in two thousand and five by a former professional basketball player and National epilepsy spokesman, Board and Board Member Mike Simmel and his father, Bill. Started as a grassroots New Jersey organization and it has now become nationally recognized and acclaimed youth basketball program with the central mission to inspire, educate, and empower young people. So the program is going to target our peer leadership and PE classes in New Milford High School, divided into a series of workstations. And it'll work on general motor skill development through stationary ball handling drills, sensory awareness, through various dribbling drills, companion drills, basic basketball techniques, putting the fun in fundamentals of the game, of I.E., Mike, Inspiration, Fun, and Leadership. But overall, it's again, another program that we're looking for ways to help our students and make everybody feel safe.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Review of personnel recommendations? Anyone have any questions regarding personnel? Review of finance and facilities? Review of athletics and co-curriculum?
I just want to, I know we'll have a report this tomorrow, but I want to thank the people listed here that are volunteering their time.
Definitely. And any questions for review of policy? The old business? New business? Okay, open to the public. As outlined in the Milford Board of Education by Law Zero One Six Seven, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Seek a motion, page seconded by Joe Dunham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions for the, for the public? No?
Motion.
Okay. Page, motion to close, page seconded by Nicole Dunn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any board member requests for additional information?
I have a question. What types of trainings are, qualify us for a master board or whatever we're trying to achieve? I'm asking this, and I'm not doing this passive aggressively at all. But I'm asking this because this is the third presentation we've had since March about board responsibilities. Thank you, by the way. And it wasn't you, you didn't, you weren't all three, but there were two others because there was one during the retreat. And one in March, like, are there others? Or are we just required to get the same ethics presentation to, to, to qualify for that?
No, there's definitely others. I mean, I can email Matt Lee and he can give us a list and we can kind of review on which ones we want to take moving forward. You could definitely do that.
I was just wondering, just because some of the information, like even some of the examples we heard. Again, you did a great job, I appreciate it.
It's okay, I understand.
Lawyers, I get it. But I just was wondering. Yeah, I was just wondering. Yeah, what the information was, because the county meeting, we talked about it too. So it must be a hot topic or we're beating dead horse at this point. Well, yeah.
I do feel as a, as a new board member, that this presentation was the clearest one that kind of helped me kind of figure out what was going on.
Yeah.
Everything else was kind of convoluted. There was a lot of rules and regulations, but this was just like. Everything else was kind of convoluted. There was a lot of rules and regulations, but this was just like, this is what you're doing. This is what happens during a meeting. This is what you can't do. So this was a lot helpful for the new, um, board members.
Thank you.
And we're going to have a copy of that, right?
We like number three.
Sorry, Matt Lee, that's, don't tell him we said no.
I, can I speak to that? I think what happens is that when you have, um, New Jersey School Boards conduct a presentation, they're giving you guidance based on what New Jersey School Boards guidance looks like. And often Matt will say, and beyond that, you really should consult with your board attorney. Well, tonight we had a presentation from the board attorney. So the board attorney is going to say, we do not advise that you do that, whereas New Jersey School Boards may say, well, some schools do it this way, some schools do it that way. You should really consult with your board attorney. So I think that could be part of why the, it seems so clear because you got a true yes or no on, on things and, um.
To the moral of the story, bringing the attorney in earlier.
Oh.
You might even have to over.
I mean, I was just saying.
But I do think sometimes that is, that's a real, that's a real, you know.
But I think if I remember correctly, um, and you can crack at this as well, Matt did say that we could have like Stephanie do a finance meeting as long as Matt's there counts.
Right.
So.
Here goes Stephanie.
Come on, Stephanie.
So we'll get a list from them.
Yes, I'm gonna list. I will email you to vote on whatever you want to do. I think also this presentation, if we get a copy, would be good. Well, you know, we do need to have a meeting for new board orientation and this one I think is key. So.
Congratulations, you just got it.
Good job.
Score.
I might tell that I win.
Paige?
I just want to add too that, um, the, the county meetings, like the things they do at those meetings, the, uh, our, our other, um, the workshop, uh, the delegate assembly, the, all of those things also count toward that certification. Um, and the reason being is not just so that we can have another plaque put on in the central office, on the board office, but mostly, and I think this is a credit to that, is that it, it is clicking, right? Like, you know, we kind of sit here and we go, yep, I heard that. But we have that. It's a really good thing that we're working in that regard because I guarantee you, we don't all agree on things on different topics, right? But somehow.
We always agree.
We will support.
But we will support. We may not agree, but we will support. But my point is that because we have that foundation. So that's really the main reason to get that certification isn't so that we can have plaque, but so we can say that we have the culture here of, of, of working together and, and getting the schools going. Right? More than anything else.
Okay, so we are going to, we are going to go into closed session. So does hereby move that the Board of Education adjourn to executive session in accordance with the provisions of Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter Two-Thirty-One, PL, for the purpose of discussion and consideration of matters pertaining to the following subject, legal. The minutes of the executive session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Seek a motion. Nicole Dunn, seconded by Angela Barney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we will not be taking action after that. And what we will come out and then adjourn after the fact.
You need a what?
We need a, we need help though.
We need to get some direction. Okay. Oh, okay.